Thank you for being here.
You just unmuted.
Very unusual holiday. So here's the format we're going to follow. I have two introductory areas, namely to review briefly the historical Jonah, whatever that means, and the Jonah we have in our story. That's number one. And number two, a brief look at what is a prophet? Was Jonah in actuality a prophet? Or was he an attack or a criticism of false prophecy? As a way of showing what the real prophets were. And then I'm going to ask for volunteers, one person each to read a chapter, and we will briefly unpack that chapter so that we can certainly have the time to finish. And then we can ask some of the questions that I asked in the handout that you have about repentance, about what does it tell us about God? What does it tell us? Jonah, justice versus mercy, particularism versus universalism. They all come into play here. So first, if you have your sheet, you can see the dates because I think the dates are helpful frame of reference. I like to know in what context does something operate? Because it makes a huge difference. So we have the Exodus, Moses, somewhere around 1250 BCE. If you go back, Abraham, maybe 1750. And no two Bible scholars agree. These are ballpark guesses. Around the year 1000, Saul becomes king. And this is a fascinating period because it's really an interaction between states, rights, and federalism, something we're slightly aware of today. And in all likelihood, Samuel was a spokesman for the old guard, for the people in control of each of the tribes. And they wanted a king as weak as possible, but who would have a national militia. And then we go through the reigns of David, who consolidated, expanded the country. Solomon consolidated everything and played great favorites with the tribes in the south and imposed taxes and corvee labor on the northern tribes. So around the year 922, Solomon died and his son Rehoboam becomes king. And he didn't have the power that Solomon had. So he wanted to continue with father's policies. The spokesperson for the southern kingdom, Jeroboam, or Jeroboam I, comes to him and says, "Look, Rehoboam, your father really oppressed us. We want fair play now. We don't want you playing favorites with the two tribes that are border on Jerusalem. So come on, ease up and we'll be okay." And he said, "I'm going to make my restrictions stricter." And the result of that is that the northern kingdom, which was really the more industrial, like the industrial north in the civil war, broke away. And you had two nations, Israel and Judah. Then you jump ahead and it's 200 years later that the Assyrians sweep in along the Fertile Crescent and come in, and they easily conquer the northern kingdom. Their goal is Egypt. They want Egypt. And they did occupy part of it, the northern part of Egypt. But what happened? Now, about the year 746, we have our first literary prophet, Amos. Amos comes from the south to Bethel, which is just across the border. It's maybe 50 miles into Georgia, is that. And he goes to their shrine and he says, "You're really messing up. You're not doing what God has commanded you. They either mend your ways, or God will send Assyria, his servant, to destroy you and punish you for your sins. But you still have time." And that turns out about 24 years before Assyria conquers the northern kingdom. And those 10 tribes were in all likelihood carried off and displaced. They were removed from the land. They were territorial, as we will see, and placed somewhere far away where they had no way to keep their root. They were totally uprooted. And other conquered people were placed in Israel. And it was a policy that seemed to work very well for them. So I think they were totally assimilated, and we're not going to find them in the Amazon or Siberia anywhere. Meanwhile, in that eighth century, between approximately the dates 789 and 748, there was one of many, many kings of Israel who, by the name of Jeroboam II. Now Jeroboam's goal was to conquer as much land as possible, to make Israel as big, less Judah, of course, as David. And he pretty much did that. He expanded way into Syria. But he was not a good guy. And there was lots of idolatry. Judaism was very diluted. And in this period, we have the stories of Elijah, then Alicia, with Ahab and the others. And they are the pre-literary prophets. So the author of Jonah takes a figure who is mentioned for two verses, only two verses, in First Kings. And makes him the leading character in the story. We know nothing about Jonah, except that Jonah was a prophet in quotes during the reign of King Jeroboam. So we don't know anything more about him. Jonah.
It's just, I'm going to unmute. Yeah, but do you have the right email address?
Somebody needs to mute. Mary?
Who is this?
It's our Instagram.
Mary, you have a number of people who have their mics open. Bernard DePaul, Mary Edwards, Lee Wagner. Those people have their microphones open. It's plainly visible. And also Jody S.
Let's see if we can continue here unless Jean can mute everyone and then you can unmute yourself when you have something you want to say. Okay, so here's the thing. The historical Jonah has really nothing, nothing to do with the Jonah of our story. That reference in Second Kings 14, exactly three verses, 23 to 25, that's all we know about him. There are other names of prophets that come up periodically in Samuel and Kings that we know nothing about. So now, then the question becomes, who was this guy? Or was he a prophet? Now, when we think of prophets, we think of to prophesy, to predict something that will happen in the future. We think of like going to the oracle at Delphi in Greece, ancient Greece. And when you went to the oracle, the oracle said something that you seemed to like, that seemed to agree with you. But it often had a built-in ambiguity in it that it could be taken both ways. So it wasn't, it wasn't. It was kind of, I don't know how we would deal with the people, sort of like a fortune teller, I guess. So who then was the historical Jonah portrayed? Was probably rubber stamping the policies, the goals, the expansionist goals of Jeroboam II. And he was toeing the party line. But the question is, did the prophets toe the party line? I guess, and something occurred to me recently, their final prophecy somehow had to fit in with the ideology of the later editors of the prophets. There had to be agreement there. But they were usually saying what the people did not want to hear. When you look at the stories of Jeremiah, you see here is the reluctant prophet. He didn't want to be a prophet. And he kept saying things that people didn't want. And we are told that eventually he was dragged off to Egypt and killed there. That's where he died. Even though, and we don't have the time today to look at their messages, but there was a message of hope, of repentance, of saying, "Here's where you messed up, and here's how you can make it right." And each message was really kind of unique. But that's not what our Jonah was. And Amos says in chapter seven, verse 14, "I am neither a prophet nor a son of a prophet." In other words, I'm not one of these who belong to the guild of prophets, the professional prophets, to which Jonah, the historical Jonah, might have been a part. They saw themselves, the real prophets, as a mouthpiece for God. When they spoke, it was a statement of faith. They believed that they were inspired by God to say what they understood to be God's word. And so, I mean, there's lots of interpretation that comes in there and lots of things that can be lost in translation. So it's very complicated. So when we look at Jonah, the question is, was he not only not a prophet, but was this book a critique of false prophecy? Was it a way of saying God cares and loves about all people? That it's not, that the idea of universalism versus particularism? And we will briefly touch on the context of the post-exiled period, where Jonah can be seen, along with the Book of Ruth, as the first Jew by choice, Ruth being that person, in both of these books as statements in opposition to what they saw, or some people saw, as the kind of narrow restrictiveness of Ezra and the governor Nahamaiah, where the declaration was that these mostly males who returned from exile, it was maybe 800 or 1,000 miles they had traveled to come back to Judah. And, you know, it was a dangerous trip. It was a difficult trip, and the women didn't make it. So these guys are without wives, and they marry local women, of whom Ruth could be seen as one of them. And then Ezra comes as the religious leader, along with Nahamaiah, in the 400s BCE, and declares, "That's no good. You have to divorce your wives." And that certainly created horrible problems. But Ezra was worried that Judaism would once again become so diluted. So here's, it's a real problem. Now, that being said, let us look at the chapters. And I would ask for a volunteer to read it. But as we're reading this, look at it carefully. Look for inconsistencies. Look to see what it's really saying. And then we'll unpack each chapter briefly. Do I have a volunteer? Tom, would you like to read? Tom Pick? I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Rabbi. I will read the chapter one. "And the word of Adonai came to Jonah, son of Ammita. Get up. Go to the great city of Nivias and proclaim against it, for their evil deeds have risen up before me. But Jonah got up to flee to Tarshish, away from the presence of Adonai. And he went down to Yaffa and found there a ship heading to Tarish. And he paid his fare and went down into it, to head with them to Tarish, away from the presence of Adonai. But Adonai hurled a great wind upon the sea, a storm at sea so great the ship was in danger of being shattered to pieces. And the sailors were frightened. He cried out, each to his own God, and flung the ship's cargo into the sea to lighten their load. But Jonah had gone down into the hull, the lower deck of the vessel, and he lay down and fell into a deep sleep. And the captain approached him and said to him, 'What are you doing sound asleep? Get up. Call to your God. Perhaps the God will be kind to us and we will not perish.' And he said, 'Each man to his companion, let us cast lots, and we might know on whose account this evil event has come to us.' So they cast lots, and the lot fell on Jonah. And they said to him, 'Tell us, you who have brought this evil upon us, what is your trade and where have you come from? What is your country? And who are your people?' And he said to them, 'I am a Hebrew. I revere Adonai, God of heaven, who made sea and dry land.' The men felt great fear, and they asked him, 'What have you done?' Because the men knew that he was fleeing from Adonai, for so he had told them. And they asked, 'What should we do to you to bring calm to the sea around us? For the sea was growing more and more stormy.' So he said to him, 'Lift me up and hurl me into the sea, and the sea will calm down for you, for I know that this great storm came upon you because of me.' And the crew rode hard to return to dry land, but they could not do it, for the sea was raging more and more fiercely around them. And they called out to Adonai, saying, 'Please, Adonai, do not let us perish because of the life of this man, and do not hold us guilty of shedding innocent blood. For you, Adonai, that which you desire, you have brought about.' And they lifted Jonah and hurled him into the sea. Then the sea stopped raging. The men revered Adonai. Great was their reverence. So they offered to Adonai a sacrifice and made vows.'
Beautifully read. Thank you so much. I had great feelings. Such a simple chapter, isn't it? Jonah obviously is in Eretz Yisrael. He's on home turf. And God tells him, "You've got to go to Nineveh, the capital of the Assyrians, the capital of the arch enemy that many of the prophets had railed against, the country that two decades later will destroy, the northern kingdom." And he says, "And go and tell them that they have sinned greatly." Now, God wants them to repent. But does Jonah? There's no indication that Jonah wants them to heed his message. In fact, it seems that Jonah is fearful that they will listen to him. And he would end up, as he does, at least on the surface, being the most successful of all the prophets. And he doesn't want that. So he says, "I don't want to do the job. I'm going to make tracks from here." And there was some speculation where Tarshish was, the most likely place was on the eastern coast of Spain. And Nineveh is north of Syria, in what would be Iraq today. So I mean, it's going in the opposite direction. There's also a possible place on that coast, in the southern coast of Turkey, but that's much more unlikely. So he wants to get away. He is afraid that people will listen. So he flees. He's avoiding responsibility. Or if you put it in terms of this morning's Torah portion, he's saying, you know, you have the blessing and the curse. And he doesn't choose the blessing. He wants to avoid that at all costs. I mean, in a sense, if you think about it, the book of Jonah, or the character of Jonah, is the complete opposite, the complete antithesis of what Yom Kippur is about. It's about making the wrong choice. And it's about rejecting the whole concept of repentance and forgiveness. So he flees. And then they're on the ship, when we look at this, and he's fine with it. And he just goes and goes to sleep. He goes down. There are all kinds of midrashim and speculation about the nature of the ship. I remember reading one that said, "When the storm attacked the ship, the storm was only above the ship, and the waters were calm everywhere." And I've got to just inject a little bit of levity here. I'm reminded of a story that a minister friend of mine in Chicago told me many, many years ago. And he said that two men were painting the roof of a church, and they were using a white latex paint. And they were up on there, and they realized they were running a little bit short of paint. So they decided to dilute it a little bit, you know, add a little bit of water to it and stretch out the paint. And it's a beautiful sunny day. And as they're getting right to where the ladder was, that there was just a small amount on the roof, and one of the two men steps down onto the ladder. It starts getting cloudy above them. And the second man is on the ladder, and he paints the last little bit as he starts to go down the ladder. And it's very dark. It's very threatening. And the minute the second painter sets foot on the ground, the sky opens up and a downpour ensues. It washes all of the paint off the roof. And even 100 yards away, it's sunny, very much like the midrash on Jonah. And soon as all the paint's off the roof, the rain stops, and a voice comes booming from the heaven. And you may not forgive me for this. And it says, "Repaint ye thinner, and thin no more." Repaint ye... Well, Jonah was the sinner, the thinner. And I'm not sure he ever does repent, but it just struck me that it goes with it. And then what about this casting of lots? This was a way of figuring out who was culpable, who caused this. And of course, the lots fell on Jonah. And he said, "I'm a Hebrew." And they knew that the Hebrew was someone, well, a people that had come from far away, the Habiru, the wandering Arameans we have in the Haggadah. And they weren't totally surprised. But the problem here was something else. They were on water. They were in the Mediterranean. They were not in any territory. And the gods of the ancient times were territorial. There was a god of Florida. There was a god of Georgia, a god of Alabama, and so on. And when you cross the border, you pay your respects to the god there. And you get inklings of that in the story of Jacob fleeing and in other places. So they knew that it was Jonah who was fault. But they also recognized that this god was beyond the territory of Jonah's homeland, of Israel. And that the god of Israel, Jonah's god, somehow had jurisdiction here everywhere. So these pagans, who are really described as almost innocent pagans, recognize that this was the real god who counted. And they began worshiping and offering sacrifices to God. It also said in some of the commentaries, before Jonah was cast into the sea, they threw baggage and cargo into the sea so that they could lighten the load as much as possible. And then only at the last resort, and you can see this in the text too, were they willing, were they even consider Jonah? And Jonah says, "I'm the cause of this. You're going to have to throw me into the sea, or you're going to die." And they don't want to do this. He's a human being. These sailors are the heroes of the first chapter. Jonah's the villain here. He's the bad guy. And so finally, though, they do cast him in the sea, and immediately the waters subside. And then we have the beginning of the second chapter. So it's a very interesting, interesting chapter. And so at this point, we come to Jonah's prayer. And if you'll notice, in chapter, the beginning, in chapter one, it provides the intro. And I mean, verses one and two. You know, that part I'm going to read. And then I want to ask someone who'll be willing to read this, which I would point out is a collection of lines or verses from throughout the Psalms. I mean, I'm not going to go through which Psalm they were, but I did get that, and I do have that information here. And so Jonah, so God sends it. It's not a whale. It's a dog, a doll. It's a big fish. A whale would be probably leviathan in Hebrew, leviathan. And the fish, he's sinking down. The fish swallows him up, and he's inside the fish. So someone would be willing to read this poem? Do we have a volunteer? Okay. Is it Ron or Barbara?
Ron.
Okay, please. This is poetry, remember, but it's...
Right. "And he said, 'I called to Adonai in my distress, and God answered me. I cried out from the belly of the netherworld, and you heard my voice. Into the depths you cast me, into the heart of the sea, the floods engulfed me. All your billowing, breaking waves swept over me,' waves, rather. And I thought to myself, 'I was banished from before your eyes. Will I ever again gaze upon your holy temple? The waters closed in over me; the deep engulfed me; rushes wrapped around my head. I descended to the low point of the mountains; the gates of the earth closed upon me forever. Yet you, Adonai, my God, raised up my life from the pit. When my life fainted away, I called Adonai to mind, and my prayer came to you, to your holy temple. They who cling to empty folly forsake their own welfare; but I, with a shout of thanksgiving, I will sacrifice to you. What I have vowed, I will fulfill. Rescue comes from Adonai. Adonai commanded the fish, and it spewed forth Jonah out upon dry land.'"
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Now Jonah's sinking down. He figures he's dying. He figures a part of him, maybe a little guilt, that he is running from God and this is just punishment. And then he gets swallowed by the fish. Somehow is providing oxygen for him to breathe, et cetera, or whatever. And he realizes that he's sinking to the depths, literally and figuratively. I mean, this is really, I mean, he's hitting bottom here in a lot of ways. So he acknowledges that God's in control, that what is happening to him, but it's, he's not saying, I deserve this. He's saying, this is what's happening to me. And there doesn't seem to be any remorse, any regret, any repentance on his part. And you could also say it's in his enlightened self-interest to ask God for help. I mean, that's his only place he can turn. He says, well, I guess you got me. You know, I'm a kind of a prisoner of the situation. Okay, God, I'm gonna do what you want. And I'm going to pass on your message as you had instructed me. But there's no sign of remorse or repentance here whatsoever. And it's, you know, it's, it's as if he's saying the right words. My father once described some clergy as a chauvinistical mechanics. He's being a prophetic mechanic here. He's saying what he's supposed to say, but probably doesn't believe it and still fearful that maybe he's gonna have to do what he doesn't want to do. And then at the end, the fish spews him out on dry land, probably along the coast of Syria, and he makes his way inland to Nineveh. Okay. We're good, I'm good. We have someone else who'd be willing to read chapter three?
I will. I'm Jody. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Jody. Go for it.
"And the word of Adonai came up to Jonah a second time. Get up, go to the great city of Nineveh and call out to it the proclamation that I tell you. So Jonah got up and went to Nineveh, according to the word of Adonai. Now Nineveh was a great city of God. Three days' journey across. And Jonah started out and made his way into the city, the distance of a one-day walk. And he called out and said, forty more days and Nineveh shall be overturned. The people of Nineveh trusted in God, and they proclaimed a fast. And they put on sackcloth, from the richest to the poorest. And the word reached the king of Nineveh. And he got up from his throne, took off his robe, put on sackcloth, and sat in ashes. And he cried out and said in Nineveh, by decree of a king and his nobles, no person or beast, a flock or herd, shall taste anything. They shall not graze, and they shall not drink water. They shall be covered with sackcloth, person and beast, and shall call loudly to God. Let all turn back from their evil ways and from the violence which is in their hands. Who knows? God may turn and relent, turn back from the heat of anger, so that we do not perish. God saw what they did, how they were turning back from their evil ways, and God relented from the evil plan for them and did not carry it out."
Fantastic. Well done, and thank you so much. Take a look at, now, what we have here, okay, I'm gonna point out a number of things that I jotted down, I think, because we're also at the point now, we have about less than 20 minutes, we need to finish up. The city is described as three days across. That's, that couldn't be. The city may have been in excess of 100,000 people, but when we talk about Nineveh, you could replace it with other great pagan cities. It was just as Jonah is a work of fiction here. Nineveh was used because it fit, because it was an empire that had destroyed the northern kingdom, and Nineveh was the capital. But it could also have been Babylon. It could have been Or, it could have been other places in the Fertile Crescent. And you know, they, over 2,000 years, they played a game of kind of like musical empires. One would come, it would be in power for a century or two or three. It would be in another area in that Fertile Crescent, a city-state would become very powerful. They would consolidate their forces and they would destroy the empire in charge. And they would become the empire in charge. And later we have the Neo-Babylonians, we have the Persians. And then in 332, it was Alexander the Great who conquered that whole area and died shortly thereafter. And then his empire was split up. The Ptolemies in Egypt, the Seleucids in the east there, the Macedonians in Greece, and an area to the north of there as well. So this could be any one of these cities. And Jonah here is the false prophet par excellence. And take a look at verse, let's see, verse four. And, and I found an interesting commentary here. The, okay. That we look at this and look what it says. Jonah started out, made his way into the city, the day, one day's walk, and said, forty more days and Nineveh shall be overturned. Now, when we see the word overturned, we think of being destroyed. But it could also be the very opposite of that, that it could be turned around and that hafuch is opposite in modern Hebrew. And it will turn over. And by turning over, it will turn over and reform itself. So, and there is this vagueness in the text here. So there is that possibility. So then Jonah's worst fears are realized. You know, the people repented, and the repentance went all the way up to the king, who took off, got off his throne, put on sackcloth, sat in ashes. And he cried out, by decree, no person, not even an animal, no flock, no herd, shall taste anything. They shall fast. No grazing, no drinking of water. I mean, they made Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur to the nth degree in Nineveh, or so it tells us here. And let us all turn back from our evil ways. Now, they didn't know if God would forgive them. The message, the possibility of repentance, isn't even in Jonah's message. All he does is said, this is God's decree, you're gonna catch it. And this is consistent with the first chapter, Jonah. And he made his proclamation. But there's no rahmanas, there's no mercy, there's no compassion, there's nothing here. It's just a declaration that they're gonna be destroyed. And in this story, the heroes really are the people of Nineveh. They're the people who realize that this god, this god that Jonas is in some way representing, is in charge in Nineveh, just as God was in charge on the sea. This is a god that is universal, a god of the whole, whole world as they know it. And this idea of a universal god comes, comes in with Second Isaiah. There's three Isaias. The first one is to chapter 39, who was the Isaiah who lived the time of around 701, when the Assyrians were laying siege to Jerusalem. And he told the people, don't, don't make an alliance with Egypt, that will seal your doom. Only make an alliance with God, trust in God as your only ally, and God will save you. And then we learn from, from Herodotus that the siege of Jerusalem was suddenly lifted because a plague attacked the camp of the Assyrians. There's, their numbers were decimated and they left. And then Judah became a vassal state from that point, 701, until 586, when the second, when Judah was conquered and destroyed and people were taken exile. But Second Isaiah was chapters 40 to 56 in chapter, Second Isaiah, and was very, is very important in Christian teaching because the suffering servant has been seen as Jesus. I, I believe along that the suffering servant was Israel itself, going through a period of purification in Babylonia. And then they come back after the decree of Cyrus. But this is very interesting period here. So God repents. God saw what they were doing. He turned away. He recognized their repentance. And then we have the culmination of the book, and we need to, like, somebody to read chapter four. Do we have? Marcia, you wanna do it? Or wait, yeah, you're, I just, okay, go for it.
Okay, thank you. "But to Jonah this was a great evil, and it made him angry. So he prayed to Adonai, saying, please, Adonai, is this not what I said when I was still in my own country? This is why I fled to Tarshish to begin with. For I knew that you are a gracious and compassionate God, endlessly patient and abounding in steadfast love, ready to repent of evil. And now, Adonai, please take my life from me, for it is better for me to die than to live. And Adonai said, is it good for you to be angry? Then Jonah left the city, found a place east of the city, made himself a shelter there, and sat under it in the shade until he might see what would become of the city. And Adonai Elohim provided a gourd, and made it rise up over Jonah to give shade for his head and rescue him from his evil situation. And Jonah rejoiced with great joy because of the gourd. But at dawn the next day, God provided a worm that attacked the gourd, and it withered. And as the sun rose, God provided an oppressive wind from the east, and the sun beat down on Jonah's head, making him faint. He begged for death, saying, it is better for me to die than to live. Then God said to Jonah, are you good and angry about the gourd? And he said, I am good and angry to the point of death. Then Adonai said, you pity the gourd which you neither worked for nor grew, which appeared overnight and perished overnight. Should I then not have compassion for the great city of Nineveh, a place of more than 120,000 human beings unable to tell their right hand from their left, and many beasts?"
Thank you so much. Well done. Look at this. So Jonah is horribly upset because what he feared is coming about. The people have repented. And he also feared that God would accept this repentance and forgive them. This was not part of his narrow-minded mentality. So he says, I don't like part of this. So in a sense, he flees from God again. So he goes out the eastern side of the city, and he parks himself by the wall. And he must have gone out in the later, louder part of the day because he's got shade. And it's not so bad. If he went out in the morning, he would have been miserable, and what happens the next day would have happened then. So he is there. Now, when he talks in that second, second verse, for he says, "I knew that you are gracious and compassionate God, endlessly patient and abounding in steadfast love, ready to repent of evil." Those words are lifted from chapter 34 of Exodus. What's the context? Moses comes down from the mountain. The people are worshiping the golden calf or whatever the animal was. Moses is furious, and God wants to destroy the people. And Moses speaks these words to God, reminding God of his qualities. And at that instant, it started thundering outside. So maybe there's some mess in there. And, and God, Moses is, is bargaining with God for the sake of the Jewish people. He said, you can't leave us now. You know, we're, we're human. We did something wrong, but you can't, you gotta stick with us here. We're in the middle of nowhere. And so Jonah, so the author not only had given us all kinds of beautiful passages from the Psalms and put them together, indicating that he really, the author knew his stuff, but here he's quoting from Exodus. And I don't think Jonah meant a word of it. This man is just saying that because he now realizes he's vulnerable once again. And he, and he may have realized that God on one, at one occasion in the, when he was in the fish, and having the fish swallow him, was merciful and compassionate to Jonah, even though Jonah knew in his heart of hearts he didn't deserve it. So once again, here, we have this situation, but, and Jonah says, I wanna die. But does Jonah really wanna die? He's fine there that evening, but the next morning, if you've been in Israel, you would know what a chamsin is, that hot, dry winds, and I'm sure Jim knows his experience. It is brutal. I remember arriving in Israel as a student in 1965, and in the middle of a chamsin, and I never felt such intense dry heat without a cloud in the sky. And I imagined that, I remembered that every time I would read this passage. So the next morning, Jonah knew it was gonna be brutal and impossible because the sun rose, rose in the east. So God causes this gourd to grow. The gourd is wonderfully protective with its wide leaves. We're not sure what exactly the gourd was, but some kind of flowering plant. And and then God sends the worm to kill the gourd. And look how upset Jonah is. How could he do this? And God says, you're angry with, about the gourd. And you didn't even have anything to do with creating it. I created it. So you're worried about something that you didn't create. Shouldn't I, as the god of the world, care about my living creatures in Nineveh and by extension, everywhere? And I think that's one of the key lessons here. And we get it. We understand what is trying to be said here, that this is not a narrow-minded approach, but this is a broad, accepting, universalistic approach. This is really the, the message of the, the key message of the book here, that God cares about all our creatures. And you know, it's just an aside. The rabbis developed the Noah hide laws, the seven laws of the sons of Noah. And these are laws that apply to all people. And they don't say anything about idolatry. Creates, create laws and courts of justice. No blasphemy, no cursing God. No, what does, it is opposed to idolatry. But they, but they later broaden the interpretation so that Christianity is not considered idolatry because we lived often in Christian lands. Don't, there were certain sexual, sexual practices prohibited. You could not- You could not just commit bloodshed, although killing and self-defense was different. This is murder. No theft, no kidnapping like that, and no eating flesh from a live animal. They would have some real problems with, with, when you take a claw off, is it a lobster or crab?
Excuse me, Rabbi?
Yeah, we're running out of time.
Five minutes.
Okay. So what we have, yeah, I'm watching in front of me too. So this is a message of universalism. It's also shows in very glaring terms the contrast between a God of just, justice and a God of mercy. And the God of Israel is not a God of justice, but a God of justice tempered by mercy. And in later centuries, this was made to seem like there was a huge contrast between Christianity and Judaism, which it's a matter of degree, I think. And also that God is not immutable. God is not, is capable of change. When Moses lobbied with God for his people, God changed, he quotes, his mind. And here too, God sends him to condemn the Ninevites, but then accepts their genuine repentance. So there are many messages here. I apologize for not having the time for discussion. But I mean, I have about forty pages of stuff that I took out and wrote down and outlined. And this, there's just so much here. I hope it gives you some food for thought. And I hope in the future, when you read this, you will think about it in its total context. And I thank you for the opportunity to be with you. I hope it challenged you to think a little bit about, particular about things you may not have looked at before. And I thank you.
Rabbi, thank you very much for your presentation. Happy New Year to you and Maryland. In about eight minutes, Rabbi Raskin will be coming on with his presentation. And we'll look forward to seeing you all then.
To, to everyone, if, if you haven't seen, if you want the handout from Rabbi Raskin, it's in the additional resources section of the iHoliday part of the website. Let's scroll down for Life After Life. And you can bring up Rabbi Raskin's, I can't quote, handout.
And for everybody, we're staying on the same Zoom call. We're not switching off to another code. So you have a couple of seconds. If you, if you need to do anything, now's the time. And then we'll wait for, we'll wait for Rabbi Raskin. And then at, when he's finished, I just want to go over very quickly the Torah portion for this afternoon. And I'll jump off at about ten minutes of four, five and four, so I can meet the cantor and we can get ready for going back at four o'clock on the livestream for Yisker. And don't forget the tissue box.
Hopefully quiet.
But it's muted.
I don't think we're muted.
Unmute yourself if you're muted.
Rabbi Goodman?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't get you.
A couple of comments on Nineveh. My son was on seven deployments to that area. That is the modern Mosul, Iraq. And the ancient Nineveh archaeological site was pretty much totally destroyed in two thousand sixteen by ISIL, just for your information. But it is there near, near Mosul.
Rabbi Goodman, Goldie posted in the chat, "Do the people of Nineveh recognize that they have sinned? Have they sinned, or is that immaterial to the story's lesson?" That's what Goldie asked.
Okay, I think from what I read in a lot of sources, they recognized that they individually had done evil. They had performed evil acts of Hamas. And that, but there were innocent people among them, children. The animals were innocent, and it wasn't a matter of punishing all of them. But they, from the king on, they took the lead from the king, and they genuinely repented. And so I, I think the case of the sailors, I think that they, they were simpler people. But this was, this was a nasty place in a lot of ways. And they did a lot of nasty things. Empire builders seem to be that way. And they don't do it out of kindness. I see. Look at that. There you are. So, uh, yeah, I think that's, hopefully, that would be my response to Goldie's question. But it was a wonderful opportunity for me to really read and think and think and think. And I think it's good for all of us. Great thing. And I think Rabbi Address would agree. One of the real great fringe benefits of being in our profession is we get to study on the job.
Yes.
To grow and learn and keep doing it. And
That's true.
And, and being in my capacity here, I have much more time than I ever had in forever.
But thank you again. And it's nice to see Rabbi Raskin. He's on my screen on the bottom right-hand column. So how you doing? And Happy New Year. And you're, you're muted, Fred. So, but whatever. And we're just waiting for, um, you know, I don't know whether Gene muted everybody or everybody can
Should be allowed.
unmute yourself.
We, we can unmute ourselves. Uh, we Everybody can unmute themselves. We're going to be going live with Rabbi Raskin in about three minutes. And Rabbi Raskin, just as a caution, or not a caution, but just so you know, at about five minutes before your set, excuse me, five minutes before your session's over, I will be letting you, you know that you have five minutes left.
Great.
Stay with me.
Um, Gene?
Yes.
Is Rabbi Address there?
He is here.
Good. I, I wanted to send a little private chat to you, but I think I'm technologically deficient. So I'm just going to do this publicly. I enjoyed, and Judy was with me, the morning service so much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Your sermon, this management, your comments. I used the text, the pulpit text I used my last year at Bet Yom. And so there are little pencil markings. And you did ninety percent of what, what I did. So you did a great service. It was very meaningful for us.
Oh, thank you very much.
And Carrie was pretty good, too.
I really must thank Carrie because the technology of the choir, then, and really the sight and sound people, I really, they are so professional. And, because I know what a lot of my colleagues are going through because we, over the last three months, it's all anybody's talked about. And I will tell you, to walk in and have everything that they did put together seamlessly. We, we had a couple of rehearsals just to put, blocking out camera angles and stuff and sound checks. But, and I'm technologically challenged, very much so. So they really, it was, they pulled it together very well. And you really have to thank your cantor because the stuff that she did with them and really the choir, the corral and the way those videos came up. And all I can tell you is wait till what, we're, we're going to try something out in Yisker. And with, that Carrie and I have been working on for a while. And we're very excited about it. Actually, I think it was bizarre because we're more excited about the Yisker service than any, than any of the other services. But we'll see. And, and she, she had this great idea when we were talking about how to format certain things. And I hope you, I hope it speaks to you in a very powerful way.
I hope so. I will say this, it just occurred to me, we're here and I was visiting our Bet Yom for a service for Rosh Hashanah. The days of creative services back in the seventies and eighties, we, you know, and then we said, "That's passe. We're going to a more traditional structured service, a liturgy reform or whatever."
Right.
Now it seems we've gone due to necessity to improvising and doing different things in different ways. And so while nobody's happy with this, on the other hand, there are some blessings that have come out of it. I think that's one of them.
No, that, that, you haven't seen anything yet. When this is over and what's happening in congregations now with the technology and people coming forward, worship is going to be so significantly different in the next several years because of what people have been forced to do in order to reach people. And yes, I remember the old days of camp and youth grouping of creative services. You know, where you'd say, "Oh, thank you, God, for the tree. It really is nice for you and me." And then we would sing a song, and that would be the creative, that would be the creative service. It's a lot different than it was. Thank God.
Excuse me, rabbis. It's time for Rabbi Raskin. You have your session. Will the people attending please mute your, your microphone? And enjoy the discussion. Raise your hand if you wish to talk. And Rabbi Raskin, do you have the participants portion on the side of your screen so you can see if anybody has their hands raised?
Uh, no, but I will do that. However, let me begin and just say, I'm going to have to, like Rabbi Goodman, limit some questions because of the scope of what we're doing. So I'm going to ask you to hold them, though it's a couple of points. I may take a couple of questions. And there should be time at the end. However, that's the bad news. The good news is that I've arranged to take the next wisdom, which is a week from Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, at ten thirty. And there'll be a different phase of this, but I've allowed a lot of time. So if anyone has questions or wants to think about it or wants to come back to it, there will be ample opportunity next Tuesday. So that's my game plan. So we'll get as much done as we can. But I will probably have to hold off on a lot of questions, but take one or two and cut it off then. So let me get started, not having been said. Life Between Life: Exploring Jewish Reincarnation. In a recent session of wisdom on the fifteenth, I presented different, the Jewish views of afterlife. And we explored briefly how reincarnation is one part of Jewish belief. Today, I'm taking a different tack. I want to revisit reincarnation, not from the view of rabbis and theologians and philosophers, but from the perspective of clinicians, psychologists, psychiatrists, M.D.s. This is very unusual stuff. Nineteen eighty-two, Raymond Moody wrote a book, Life After Life. Prudential's, Raymond Moody earned a PhD in philosophy. He earned a PhD in psychology, and he had an M.D. He wasn't dumb. He coined the phrase "near-death experience", arguing that officially deceased patients reported experience that suggested afterlife. Most medical colleagues were skeptical, critical, or outraged. Moving on, the renowned Elizabeth Poubel Ross, M.D. She, if you remember her name, created the model of the classic five stages of grief. Abner, denial, anger, bargaining, depression, acceptance. But in nineteen eighty-four, she wrote On Life After Life, based on her experiences with twenty thousand dying patients. She confirmed Moody's findings on near-death experience. Again, most M.D.s then and probably today in psychiatrists vehemently reject these ideas as non-clinical. Earlier on, however, Dr. Ian Stevenson, and these are some of the most prominent names in this, this community of thought, and there are others. He was chair of the University of Virginia, the Medical School Psychiatry Department Chair. He authored these titles, among others, Twenty Cases Suggestive of Reincarnations, back in nineteen sixty-six. Reincarnation and Biology, nineteen ninety-seven, is another one along those lines. And this one's really interesting. Children who remember past lives, nineteen eighty-seven. Controversial, to say the least, but hard to just simply dismiss out of hand. Another name, Brian Weiss. Brian studied at Columbia and Yale University Medical School. He had an internship in internal medicine at NYU, plus a two-year psychiatry residence at Yale. He became head and was there for many years, head of psychiatry at Miami's Mount Sinai Medical Center. Since nineteen eighty, he began discussing the past life experiences of four thousand patients. I'm going to stop and just make this little parenthetical comment. We're all following polls these days, political polls, surveys of what people like and want to do. Um, and you read the statistics on them. And they're based on nine hundred or a thousand, four thousand, twenty thousand cases, I think are a little bit more substantive than just several hundred. So I wanted to point that out. And he said, quote, "His technique was hypnotic regression therapy, the idea that through hypnosis you can go deep enough to go beyond the conscious." Hypnotic regression therapy can have a curative effect on many phobias and ailments that are rooted in past life experience when acknowledged by the patient, unquote. He is convinced of the survival after death of an element of the human personality. And in two oh oh eight, Eben Alexander, M.D., interest, this is a very interesting one. I read this book. An academic neurosurgeon for over twenty years at Boston's Brigham and Women's Hospital, at Boston Children's Hospital, and at Harvard Medical School, he fell into himself a deep coma due to bacterial meningitis. It was from a particularly vicious strain of E. coli. By his own account in a book that he wrote, Proof of Heaven, I, I would have write a sad indications of heaven, but he wrote proof of heaven. Clinically, he was brain dead, incapable of thought, or even hallucinations. But he reported visiting an afterlife, reading spiritual guides, and a woman who was a sister he had never known. And of course, when he recovered, came through, he learned that he had had this sister who had died before he was born. And of course, many, probably the majority of medical critics debunk this kind of interpretation. His teachings are consistent with people who have experienced near-death as real. I'm going to do one more, and then we'll stop for some questions. And political people say rebuttal. Paul Witten, M.D. and PhD, is a professor of emeritus of Toronto, York, and Guelph Universities in Canada, staff psychiatrist at Toronto Hospital. His specialties were migraine, chronic pain, head injuries, and trauma. Through his research into past lives and reincarnation, he used hypnosis to take patients back into their former lives to uncover the origins of traumas and the rosies that afflict them. He succeeded in healing people by sorting out their past karma. Karma meaning the destiny and challenges and cards we have all been dealt with in life, could end them. He saw and believed that the actions, attitudes, successes, and failures in one life could determine the setting, challenges, and destiny of a life or lives to come. Through painstaking hypnotic sleuthing, Dr. Witten compiled personal inventories of past lives, and this is hard to believe, it seems, stretching in some cases across hundreds of years, numerous personalities, but with continuity of consciousness from birth to death, through transition and then rebirth. And he also documented the events between death and the next birth of these conversations. What happens when we die? Are we judged? Do we come back? And in the traditional literature, and in the traditional classic orthodoxy of Machiavellian, resurrection of the body, these very issues are raised and debated and discussed. What happens after death? It's an area rarely studied. So Witten carefully studied So Witten carefully studied subjects and documented in great detail, recalled past lives and the events between those lives, while his causes and effects through many lifetimes he was witnessing. The shortest interval he observed between lives was 10 months, the longest exceeding 800 years. Nearly done. Medic consciousness, his term, the spiritual insights gained during life between life. The consciousness suggests that consciousness, our consciousness, is continuous, that part of us, the higher spirit, is indeed immortal, like Judaism's immortal soul. According to Simcha Raphael, one of the books, and I should say, I wrote bibliography, it should have said selected bibliography, and he's written one of the classics. He wrote, Nachmanides writings reflect an emerging psychological orientation. Increasingly, the experience of life after death comes to be seen as a state of consciousness, unquote. That's Nachmanides. In the Tibetan Book of the Dead, souls in between time, it's called the bardom, kind of like Ulam Haba in our tradition. According to Dr. Witten, consciousness is transferable from our time of life between birth and death and our highest spirit, as it is suggested in Kabbalic and some rabbinic teachings about levels of the soul, Rabbi Adress and Goodman, and maybe several others of you know about nefash, ruach, and nishama, we've talked about that in the past. I'm going to stop now because I'm sure we've got some questions, comments, actions. Let's do try to stay right on this topic.
If anybody has a question, please raise their hand, the blue hand. I don't see any rabbi.
Does any of this make sense? Is this a way out? We had a session on Jewish views of life after death. How does this compare, for example, with resurrection of the body, which is Machiavich Resurrection, from which classic orthodoxy takes its place? That makes sense? Does the fact that we die mean that everything's gone? What about conservation of life and soul? Are these questions you ask, does this make sense from experts like this? I'd be interested in your reactions. Marcia?
Well, I don't believe in any of this, but this goes back to mysticism. And, well, you know, anybody can say whatever they want to say. Anybody could say, I'm in my second life. Anybody can say, this is how it was when I was alive at another time. It's a matter of how you speak and how you impress your thinking and/or beliefs on other people. And frankly, death is for the living. Living people are the people who experience the death of somebody else. We grieve, we mourn, we have heartache, we remember good times, we remember bad times. And that people do not, I mean, they have seances, they believe. I can't see any real validity to any of this thinking.
You read any of these books? Have you, I mean, these are not, these are not talk show hosts.
I don't even care to because it's not a topic that I have any faithful thinking about.
Okay. Next, Ruth Van Alstine. Ruth, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you for being here, Rabbi.
You too.
It's an interesting conversation, and I've always believed in, not always, but for a very long time, believed in reincarnation. And it's interesting, when I converted, I actually went through, the rabbi who I went through was orthodox rabbi, actually, I went through that process with him. And we had long conversations. He actually believed in reincarnation. And he told me that I had been Jewish before, and that kind of, the whole process was beside the point because he said I'd been Jewish. And so it was, it was very interesting. And I'd always believed that I had had many lives. And so, yes, and I've done a lot of reading with these people, maybe not all of these people you've talked about, but yes. I believe that we come back to learn things, certain things, and we work on our issues. And we learn, and hopefully we work through things. And then if we don't, we have a chance to come back and, and work on things again. And we do the best we can.
Good. Well, that is, in fact, one of the traditional Jewish views, especially in Hasidism. So thank you. Who's next? Lance?
Lance Shugerman. Yeah, you mentioned that people had counterpointed. I had heard of some of these authors before and saw, not delved into it myself, but the, what is the peer review of these? Have these, these people have put out books? Have they put out published articles in peer review magazines? And what have the peer reviews come back with and so on?
At the risk of making people uncomfortable today, the best analogy I can think of would be, you know, kind of like Georgia and Florida football, or Red Sox and Yankees. I mean, it's, many, many have suggested, just as our first speaker said, I just don't believe this. It's just not possible. And yet, others have, and we're going to be looking at some of the specifics of that. But yeah, there have been some of these cohere with others. Part of the problem is, and I think the word is evidence and proof, we are of the scientific mindset. And if we can't prove it empirically, petition, controlled studies, it doesn't exist. And yet, we've talked this way theologically about God or about love. How can we prove that love exists? What do you mean by that? How do you know? Is it emotion? Is it chemicals? We know. If you're in love, you know what that feels like. So I guess the answer is there have been some that have reinforced each other and a small group, and others who had said, I don't know how this can possibly be. We're going to look at some of the specifics in a few minutes. Who's next?
David Sellen has his hand up. David, please unmute.
I used to teach the Life After Life book in my psychology classes as a basic common book during the chapters on death and dying and situations. And the students liked it because it was everyday people that he talked about. And he gave a thorough discussion of what each one came up with. And he also said that there were five things, and I'm not going to go through it, there are five things that each one of the cases that he mentions all repeated in that what they said. Now, of course, you can believe it, and today, no, there were no peer reviews, but I like to bring to the class things that maybe they could think about, maybe not. You know, he also wrote a book about children after he wrote that book. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to be getting into some of those specifics soon. Let me just put this out, in my session a couple of weeks ago, one of the good pieces of information is that in Judaism, your belief of an afterlife, life after death, there's no afterlife, no survival, reincarnation, is optional. It's not a fundamental, as it is in, say, Christian, Buddhist, Hindu, where it's an absolutely key philosophical flag. Judaism, you can have many different views, and they're all authentic, because after all, we can't prove it one way or another. It's not about proof, it's about what makes sense. And what are other authentic views that I myself may not subscribe to, but don't have to denigrate as a bubba-maissa? Or, again, Machiavich Resurrection of the Body, which is why in traditional orthodoxy and in classical traditional Judaism, suicides weren't buried in the cemetery or outside the fence, why there was no cremation, it's why there were no number of customs, because you're going to need your body. So in my way of thinking is, gee, if that's true, I sure hope I come back with the 60-year-old sharp mind, but the 20-year-old physical body. I'm not sure how that works out. It doesn't matter. Because at the end of the day is every one of you will probably, I hope, agree, and certainly every rabbi understands, is what we do in this world. It's about, it's vote, and it's about living right, it's about doing. And then what will be, will be. So what's not at stake is integrity or theology or salvation, technical word is soteriology, meaning the whole study of what happens to us and how we are, move on. But it is interesting conversation. We have some more hands.
Jody Settland is next. Jody, please unmute.
I appreciate this topic. I belong to a small group of friends who gather weekly to study and meditate together and practice Jewish meditation on a regular basis. And we have lots of wonderful discussions. And the book that we're in the midst of right now is a very light read, but it's very enlightening, called Einstein and the Rabbi, by Naomi Levy. We've studied Usar in the past. So what I printed out from a friend who's in this group was a kind of a summary by Rabbi David Cooper of the Kabbalistic view of the different levels of the soul. And getting familiar with them, and I obviously won't go into them now, but a lot of this makes so much sense to me. And I really appreciate what you said, Rabbi Raskin, concerning, it's a matter of my choice, what I want to believe. And I love that about Judaism as well, because I have, have sort of in development stages about my beliefs about the soul and about, but I know that I have experienced certain many moments in my life that have, where I have felt elevated, not talking about looking down on anybody, but lighter, more connected, totally plugged in, you know, connection, a really strong connection with a force of some kind or a spiritual feeling. And a lot of that I get from my temple family and coming to services and my practicing my faith. But a lot of it is, a lot of it is based on this idea that we carry a soul that my, the soul I've got now, that I thank God every morning for returning to me, came from somewhere else and is on a long, continuous journey. And when I'm in trouble or in pain or going, experiencing long agonizing difficulty, and many of us have, most of us, that's life, I sort of, I deal with it by saying, well, you know, there's something I'm supposed to be learning here that I'm obviously not learning. Otherwise, why would this experience resurface so many times? Why would this pattern be so present in my life? And I also like to think that perhaps the soul that I carry didn't do such a good job of dealing with this the last time around, and that's why I'm having to deal with this now. And that perhaps if I manifest in the best way possible, my soul will continue on to enjoy more enlightenment.
Well, I want to thank you because that is one of the classical positions of Jewish reincarnation, Gilgo Hanefesh. And it's also one of the common themes in most of the people who've written about this from a philosophical or even a medical view. The good news is, there's some coherence. So maybe not clinical peer reviews, but each one is saying very similar things. We're there to, I think one of the words Witten uses is, afterlife is like cosmic schooling. We're here to improve or learn to, and that lines up, it parallels some of the language in our liturgy about moving on and Ulam Haba. So I thank you. Let me take one more, continue, and then we'll get some more questions.
Marcus Hale is the next one up.
Sure. Thank you. Jean, can you hear me okay? I wanted to say that I think this sounds a lot like, it makes sense particularly coming from the idea of a living God. And Rabbi Adress, you referenced Abraham Heschel this morning, and I was thinking of his book, Man is Not Alone. And I had a quote pulled up here that says, "All that is left is a choice to answer or to refuse to answer. Yet the more deeply we listen, the more we become stripped of the arrogance and callousness, which alone would enable us to, enable us to refuse." So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I was honored to have studied with Rabbi Heschel in New York at Columbia. So I had a lot of contact with him and how people have really seen his role, and it adds the whole concept of wonder, awe, being just amazed at the beautiful flowers. I've been in Florida now 11 years, and every winter I look out and I see flowers, and I'm amazed. But if you're from New England, that's a typical kind of reaction. Thank you. One more, and then we'll go on to the next.
Next one is up is Ron and/or Barbara Hood. Please unmute.
Thank you, Rabbi, for such an interesting topic. I really appreciate it. I have actually done some reading in that area. It first started off with, my father passed away and he had a near-death experience. And I personally knew my father very well, probably was closer to him than the other family members. And I knew that it was real for him, but I won't, that's a personal thing. But anyway, I have watched the videos of children who are under school age, and there are 2,000 of these studies done by the University of Virginia. And if you ever watched them, these children knew things they could not possibly have known. They told information about their former life, and they went back and validated those, what they said. Anyway, it convinced me. I think it's a wonderful topic, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. I'm going to be getting to that, touching on it very briefly in a couple of minutes. Let me go ahead and continue. So what are, what are some of these phenomena? And I think this is part of the handout that you, I prepared. Phenomena reported by most from all of these, whether it's been in literature or in rabbinic or theological writings, whether it's psychiatrists, M.D.s, near-death experience, and there is a continuum. You mentioned spiritual phenomena. You know, some, some people are more open to mystical experiences. Some people have a capacity for this. They've done studies, the fellow who's done studies in IQ. And we think of IQ as math and verbal and performance. And now they've done social intelligence and emotional intelligence, and they've shown that some people are more gifted in those areas and with some development. And one of the areas... And one of the areas they've been working on, but I haven't read anything lately, is spiritual intelligence. Some people are more gifted, more receptive to paranormal events. So that having been said, let's, let me thank you and let's move on. So let's look at this list here. These are phenomena reported by most who have had these experiences of past life regression or near-death experience or after-death experience, which is contact by deceased loved ones. And I have to agree with what you just said. The fact is, when you read case after case after case after case after case, people from all walks of life, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and thousands, you still may not believe it, but you have to at least suggest that, well, maybe there's something there for some people. So number one, and so I think this is all very positive. What I'm not getting, and in all the reading that I've done, is, well, you know, you go up there and it's very confusing and, you know, it's conflicted and you have a lot of paperwork to do and it's never enough time. I don't hear that. I hear all this very positive stuff. Euphoric feelings of joy, love, serenity and inner harmony. No fear, no pain. Over and over, people report, "I'm okay. I'm well. I'm not in pain. I feel well. Don't worry about me. Take care of your life." Two, experiencing a tunnel-like movement to increasingly varied light, colored light or a very bright light. Those two things, joy and a feeling of serenity and a tunnel-like vision ending in a bright light. They seem to be, if not 100% across the board, very common with most people who've reported these experiences regardless of their age or situation. Three, connecting with loved ones, known or unfamiliar. That's one of the great wishes of anyone who contemplates passing on into a future. There, we would get to see some of the people we've known or some of the people we haven't known. Meted by a supportive guide. Sometimes it's a relative, a friend. Sometimes it's someone unknown. This is interesting. Life review. And we talk so much about judgment and the book of having lived well and the balance of the scales in our own theology and in our own liturgy. And there they reported either being judged by a panel of three, seven. Not in a harsh condemnatory way, but in order to instruct, to improve a soul's next step. And the next step is either to reincarnate and enter life or if it's a near-death experience, again, over and over again, we've seen this in Moody and Whitton's work, the return. It's not time for you to be here. You need to go back. Often the person is reluctant because they have this great sense of serenity. And the studies have followed these people who have, quote, "returned from a near-death experience." They've all lived very differently, very calmly, very serenely, a lot, very hopeful, just much more transformed because it's a transforming experience. Second, there's a sense of judgment, either self-judgment or God. Whitton says the afterlife, I think I mentioned this, is like a cosmic classroom. And you know, that's very appealing in Judaism. And it's appealing to a lot of us. The whole purpose of life is to move on and to improve and to grow and to flourish. There's a Hebrew concept, Pardes, heavenly orchard, similar to the Garden of Eden, Gannat Eden. We discussed that a couple of weeks ago. But the goal in either case, whether you believe in reincarnation or in the traditional Jewish philosophy, is to promote personal growth and integrity. So all of the questionings, well, what about horrible people and sinful people? And but, well, you know, most of us are not completely saints. And most of us are not terrible, awful, sadistic sinners. Most are in the middle. So it's how do we come to terms with our weaknesses? And how do we come to term with our areas for growth? Another, seventh, it's spiritual rebalancing. You know, one of the symbols of this time of the year with Rosh Hashanah are the scales. And we read in some of the liturgy this morning. Got some good stuff, the Yitzhahra, the good impulses, the Yitzhahatov, the bad, and the Alchet. We mentioned all of the things that we could have done better. And then there's even the very end, Hatov, the things that we have done well. We need to take credit for that too. Because very few of us are all saints or all sinners. So in a sense, this spiritual rebalancing is kind of an afterlife do-over. Something to think about. I have a couple more, but I wanted to stop. You have a hand? Anne, are you, are you still on?
Anne Stone has her hand up. Anne, if you unmute yourself, please.
Thanks, Jean.
Going back to, I believe in it. I don't know anybody really that has encountered this, except that I had a, lost an uncle. And shortly after he passed away, like two years, his son had a son. Out of, they, he never thought he would have any more children. And all of a sudden, he had, his wife became pregnant and he had this son. And this son knew things that nobody, that nobody could know at his age. He just knew things, not so much about a past life or that he lived before, but just knowledge that he knew. And so I think it's, there's certain, certain people that are blessed this way, if it's a blessing, you know? And it can happen. We're not all chosen, but I think some are chosen.
Right. And it can be a gift and a blessing, and it can also be a source of great conflict and confusion. I'm gonna be giving my concluding reading on that very, very topic.
Rabbi Jim Grant has his hand up.
Thanks. Well, I'd just add a comment. First of all, of course, I have not had any of what we were discussing about. But all of my life, I worked, you know, in technology. And much of it was at Oak Ridge, Tennessee, where our atomic bombs were built. I took care of the computers there, as well as a number of other things. And it was interesting, I was in various meetings in which there were these people who actually repeated much of what you had just said. But especially the most common things that nearly every one of them was that they had some kind of usually terrible accident and were killed in this accident. But for whatever reason, came back to life. Well, anyway, they went through much of the things you've mentioned there. The bright light and the tunnel, the tunnel trip with a lot of wind frequently. And sometimes the travel was for quite some time. And then they did actually, in some cases, say they met angels. They always had someone they met and a number of the other, the things that you mentioned. But all of these people were very well-educated. All of them were men, because in the business we were in, that was mostly men in those years. And I think, you know, 50s and 60s and so on. So anyway, I just wanted to pass that comment on that, you know, in support of what you're saying.
Thank you, Jim. Anthony has a comment and then I'll move on to the last item.
Anthony, there you go.
Shalom.
Shalom.
Shana Tova. I just wanted to make a contribution about reincarnation. Couple of cultures that I know of in Nigeria specifically have got ideas of reincarnation. One of them is the Yoruba ethnic group, which is widespread over West Africa. And we have descendants of the Yorubas in the Caribbean and far as Brazil and even other parts where you have the dispersion of Africans after the transatlantic and trade of slaves, of people that were enslaved. But there are names in those cultures that actually imply reincarnation. Because like you have a name among the Yoruba that's Babatunde, which literally means father has come back. There's a female equivalent, Yetunde, which means mom has come back. In my own culture, which is the Anang of Eastern Nigeria, close to the Igbo's, that territory where the Igbo's are, there's a name, Etete, which actually means grandfather. And then the female version is Ekaite, which actually means grandmom. occasion is as if the grand, the parent is thinking that this child is reincarnation of his or dad or mom. And that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for adding. Of course, it reminds us, Ashkenazi Jews, of the tradition of naming a newborn child after a deceased or recently deceased grandparent to carry on the memory. But again, in classical acidic thought, the soul actually is supposed to be the similar, the similar soul. Okay, so we'll get into some specifics. And I have a bunch of very specific things and if you want to get into detail next Tuesday. So Dr. Ian Stevenson wrote on xenoglossy. Xenoglossy is speech in a language totally unknown to the speaker. And xenographer is writing. That person has never, not even had French 102 or a couple of weeks of Hebrew. But Dr. Whitton hypnotized a 37-year-old behavioral scientist to things. He spoke 22 words related to Icelandic Norwegian in Old Norse. Old Norse, like old French and old English, but it's much older. Of course, he'd never been to Iceland or Norwegian or anything. And then he started scribbling what looked like Arabic writings. They didn't know what it was. Whitton located an expert at the Library of Congress, who was an expert in the Near Eastern Department. He identified those scribbles as an extinct Mesopotamian language. It was a language that was in use from 226 to 651, just about 400 years of the Common Era. This language is, well, how do you explain that? Now, we've got people who have some real skills in language. I'm familiar with a lot of the ancient languages, not personally and fluently, but we know about Aramaic. I've heard of Akkadian and Samarian. Jim, you might be the only candidate, but, or maybe one of my two colleagues. Does anybody ever heard of Sassanid Palavi? I had never heard of it. So how do you explain that? The answer is, there's no way to explain it and it's what it is. So it's things like that that just kind of make us have to look at things as an outlier. Okay, summary points. And we may finish tiny bit early if possible. Five points. Judaism has many authentic views of life after death. The key for us all is to live well and act well while on earth. Just like the lessons that we're supposed to do regardless of what our view is when reincarnation or afterlife or no afterlife. Two, Jewish views of rebirth, karma and afterlife, they're different. They're not the same as those of Eastern faiths. And we could talk about that if you have an interest in that. I did a little Eastern comparative religion in college. They're similar, but not the same. They're parallels, but they function differently. Again, we can only affirm a view, whatever it is. The purpose, the goal of each is divine justice. We're all looking for justification, why people have suffered and how is that compensated? People have made mistakes. They recoup from that. And also growth of the soul, regardless of your view. Number four, very few souls are beyond hell. Most are okay. And they have to work that out. And these are Jewish views, of course. And then fifth, I'd leave you with, before I conclude, with some Jewish terms that are useful to know if you're gonna have this conversation in any depth. Gan Eden, the Garden of Eden, translated erroneously as heaven, but it's the Jewish view of paradise. Gehanim, we talked about this before. Purgatory experience, learning school. Olam Haba, the world to come. We always talk in Judaism about Olam Mazen, Olam Haba. This world and the world to come, as we like to say in Yiddish, Kenavim, the next world. And yet the word Olam, thinking about it, isn't just a place, space. Olam means world. Melacholam, God, you are the sovereign of the universe. Olam also means time, eternal, forever, as in Le'olam ve'ed, blessed forever and ever. So looking at Olam Haba as time rather than a location on a map, it's food for thought. Shol, shades, Hades, shol, kind of the shadowy place from biblical time. Machiad HaMeiteh, resurrection of the body. And Gilgo Hanefesh, recycling of souls, a little bit different than classic reincarnation. The point of all of this, regardless of what you believe, be good. I have a couple of questions and then I have a concluding reading. You've got a couple of minutes.
You have Rabbi?
Rabbi Goodman wants to say something.
Rabbi Goodman?
Thank you. I unmuted. Rabbi Raskin, thank you for a fascinating presentation. When I was young, I think I was pretty dumb. Anything that didn't jump out at me as being true. You know, I sort of listened politely, because I've interacted with an awful lot of people in 50 years. And, you know, all right, that's interesting. And I blew it off. And the older I get, the more I realize I don't know. And I have heard so many stories from people, anecdotes of, and now I say, I don't know. It's possible. It's interesting. And I think we all have to be open to what we don't know. And I think this, you give us a great deal of food for thought. And so for me, there isn't even a jury yet. It's just my mind's open to possibilities. I've always loved science fiction and things are presented which I wouldn't normally think about. And I think you give us a great deal of food for thought. And I'm saying, I'm here to learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. I'm gonna conclude with something here, just to, I'll tell you, Whitton's book is out of publication. This book is not. And we talked about children, children. So a two-year-old California baseball prodigy, his name was Christian Hou. He was a prodigy. He was two and he could throw a ball like a six or seven-year-old. He began sharing vivid memories of being a baseball player in the 1920s and 30s. And this is in California. I mean, it's, they're not gonna be following East Coast baseball. From riding cross-country on trains to his fierce rivalry with Abe Ruth, he declared historical facts about the life of American baseball legend Lou Gehrig that he could not have possibly known at the time, two years old. distraught by her sons on Annie Revelations, his mother Cathy, started a journey of discovery that would shake her, she was a fundamentalist Christian, shake her views to the core and forever change her views on life and death. She went to her minister and he said, "It's the devil and this is horrible." She found another minister eventually and... She found another minister eventually and he explained, and as Bob did, to be open to experiences. But she wrote a book and it's called The Boy Who Knew Too Much. An astounding true story of a young boy's past life memories, 2017, somewhat recent. Kathy Byrd shares her experiences, lessons she learned, and a story of healing in the lives of these intertwined soul. And by the way, a movie was being made by the same name. I don't know whether it had to be slowed down because of COVID, but making a movie of this. And there were many other titles of children recalling past life histories in astonishingly accurate detail. And they're also a fascinating story. Does anybody remember, maybe some of us in the older group, Righty Murphy? Does that name ring a bell? Anybody remember that? Righty Murphy was, back in the 50s, was a housewife in the west Idaho, I don't remember. And she claimed that she was born in Ireland and had this family and caused quite a stir then. And they checked it out and they went to the little town and described the story. You know, I think Rabbi Goodman said it well. We don't know. We don't have to know. Rabbi Goodman has to teach, Rabbi Address has to do a service, Rabbi Raskin has to do what he has to do. We all have our jobs. This is just another way of looking at the meaning of life. So, yes. Any final comment? If not, I will.
Anthony has something to say.
Anthony has something. He's got a couple of minutes before we tune up.
I just, I just wanted to include, I mentioned that a cousin of mine actually had the name in my culture called, which is actually a shortened form of the name for old person. So, and this was someone that was one of, one of my youngest cousins. So for the parents to actually give him a name. It was an old, old person and he was actually like, acted like an old soul. Life was as if knowing stuff he shouldn't be, he shouldn't be knowing and having a kind of wisdom beyond his age. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Rabbi.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'm concluded. Again, a week from Tuesday, 10:30, we'll continue this. I'm going to go into another direction. We have talked about what Jewish thinkers and rabbis and scholars have said. We discussed some of the clinicians' approach. And the next time I'm going to be taking a secular group. And that you're going to find interesting as well. So anyway, I thank you for your attention and time and interest. And with you all, a very nice and healthy, happy, prosperous and serene New Year and Shana Tova Tikka Tav to. Thank you, Gene, for your help.
Thank you for a great presentation. Happy New Year to you both. And we now have about seven minutes until Rabbi Address comes on, so please unmute if you'd like to. And I'll let you know when we start the next session. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Fred. Thanks, Bob. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Rabbi Raskin?
Yes.
Well, when I was reading your bibliography, I, my eyes fixed on that Sassanid, Sassanik.
Palavi.
Yeah, that, that language that you mentioned, that's been disappeared since the 600s, right? Something like that.
That's what I read.
Well, this has nothing to do with anything, I'm sure. But I was watching a series on one of the Prime or Netflix or something called Outlander. And it had time travel in it. And, right, and so I don't know if you remember the nickname or the affectionate name that the male protagonist called Claire. Because Sassanik, Sassanik, that's right. That's what I thought of when I saw that word. And I wondered if there was any connection.
I believe that's Scottish for.
An English woman or?
Well, for a foreigner.
A foreigner.
Yeah. But it sounds the same, but it's not the same linguistic root.
Okay.
All right. It's a good association. Wonderful. Shana Tova, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was wonderful.
Enjoyed it. Thank you. Hey, folks. Shana Tova.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Shana Tova.
Oh, Felice, how are you?
I'm fabulous. Thank you. I missed your, your last presentation. Is there any way that it was recorded or anything?
Yes, Felice, all of these are being recorded. They will be available on our website. Give us a few days to get it up.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Judy Teller-Hysler.
She's here, walking around. Hey, I'm not so sure that when this COVID is over, how happy I'm going to be. She made challah and brisket. I'm telling you. I'm very surprised and delighted. Nice to see you, Felice.
I want to recommend a movie, if you can hear me.
Yes.
It was a movie I saw in 1980 with Ellen Burstyn called Resurrection. And it still haunts me today, 40 years later. And it deals with, she has a, she goes beyond and comes back and how transformative it is. And it's a very powerful, poignant movie and the issues she faced afterward. I just looked it up quickly on Amazon. I know they sell it. There may be a way that we could, a person could rent it and see it. But it was a very haunting movie.
I'll try to catch it this week, Bob. Thank you. There are other movies too. And, and that's a more general conversation about the, the whole paranormal experiences, nothing to do necessarily with death. So that's, that's a different, you know, slice.
If I remember correctly, it gave her some special healing powers to help other people. She came back and ended up living in someplace in Western California in the desert.
Don't tell us too much. You won't want to see the movie.
That's all I remember. But I just remember I found it very haunting.
Be well. Shana Tova.
Shana Tova.
Okay, we'll see you in a minute, folks.
I got to tell you, Rabbi Address, that after this experience this year, I think we're going to have a hard time. I know that if we're all together next year in a sanctuary, I'm going to have so many people come to me and say, we could do this in under two hours. Why does it take four to do it live?
Timing is, yeah, we had a, Carrie and I had a long conversation about it. How much to adapt the services. Most of my colleagues who are doing this, you know, virtually or whatever, have amended the timing of the service. So we all, most of us have agreed that the necessity of having a three-hour service and asking people to sit in front of a screen for three hours is probably ludicrous. Since I have found, since I started doing a lot of teaching in April, that the, what I call the tushy quotient, that's a technical. Is it gets smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
I used to be able to sit for a couple, I'd had a couple of meetings and when this first started, like three-hour sessions, nobody does, well, that's not true. But it's tougher to, after about an hour and fifty, hour and a half, you're sort of like, you know. It's the challenge of modern technology. Somebody will come up with an invention somewhere, somehow in the next six months.
I was just thinking I needed a different kind of chair to sit in. That's the whole answer to the question.
That's why I stand, that's not, that's no problem for rabbis and cantors because we stand all the time. And here, and here's a secret that a lot of times you can't see, like behind these big pulpits, you could, we sometimes do like exercise with our legs just to make sure we can still feel our legs starting today. And it's usually about 4:15, 4:30 that my ankles start to say, that's enough, that's enough. You know, not as, as my doctor is once of saying, you know, you're not as young as you used to be.
You're a baby.
No, I ain't no baby, baby. So listen, it's, with your permission, because I'm going to run into a little bit of a time crunch. Because we have to, we're going to do services at four and it's not a question, we can delay it to like 4:15. Because we, with the, with the, everything lined up and the, and the technical people are moving in now and I'm waiting for the cantor to, to come back. So what I want to, if it's okay with you guys, unless there's, if there's a major objection, I, I just want to just go over some. We're not going to do an hour because I have to be in the sanctuary in about 20 minutes to just warm up and make sure that some of the things we've set up are, are, are ready to go. And we, we did some of that. We moved some furniture around after the morning service.
Rabbi, excuse me for one moment. Will everybody please mute their microphones?
Oh.
Please mute your microphones, except for the rabbi.
Oh, and I got away with it. But anyway.
We should be good now.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Gene. And again, thank you, Gene, for quarterbacking this because as, I'm from the generation who knows not technology. And also thank you very much. There's a bunch of very nice things in the chat room about services this morning. So I really do appreciate that and, and the cantor does as well. If you have a holiday book, if you open up to page 338, it's going to make things a lot easier. If you don't have a holiday, a little, a high holiday book, don't worry about it. I'll just refer it. This, the Torah portion for young people or afternoon is again, one of the great, great Torah portions. It comes up in the spring because it's Leviticus. Leviticus 19. And the reason why I wanted to just mention it, because we're not doing a formal afternoon service and an afternoon Torah service. It's part of the, we, we changed it for the teaching as opposed to more liturgy. So this is, I always describe this passage, ladies and gentlemen, as the Reader's Digest, if you remember Reader's Digest. The Reader's Digest version of Jewish ethics. And it works like this. Some of you may remember one of the two or, well, in the probably, in the top five worst inventions of the human race, worse, like why? And that's called the cocktail party. Now, this is a place of dread for most colleagues. Because we would go to, have to go to one of these things and we would have our glass of seltzer. Because God forbid you should drink with all your congregants around. And somebody would walk up to you and you're counting, you're looking at your wife saying, how quickly can I get out of here? And somebody would say, oh, Rabbi, do you mind if, do you mind if I just ask you a question? There's just 30 seconds. That's code language for, you're going to be here for about four hours. Because this is one of those questions that you can't answer in 30 questions. And they'll ask something about why does Judaism believe in, okay? If that ever happens to you, and my throat's starting to go, if that ever happens to you, just tell them to go home and read Leviticus 19. Because everything, it's all encapsulated. This is a great chapter. All the basic moral, ritual, ethical, social justice ethics that are found in thousands of years of Jewish history are found in this one chapter. And it's, each paragraph is, is separated by the concept of ani adonai. I am the Lord. In other words, why do you do say certain things? Because you are in a sacred relationship with a power that is beyond yourself. So for example, you have the ritual laws right away about Shabbat. That's the first thing that it talks about. It's about Shabbat. And then you have that superscription ani adonai Elohecham, which appears over and over. I am the Lord, you're God. Okay? Now go to verse 10. Here you have an economic, social welfare ethical passage about when you reap the harvest of your field, and this appears other passages. What are you supposed to do? You're not supposed to touch the corners. Why? You should leave them for there because there are always going to be people who don't have enough to eat. What does this have to do with now? That means right now, tomorrow, you write a check to the local food bank in Jacksonville. Because there are people in Jacksonville who do not have enough food to eat because of the pandemic. Okay? That's exactly what this is. And, and notice that the Congress, it understands. There are always going to be people in need, always, okay? Verse 15 says, you shall not, you shall not do injustice in judgment. You shall not favor one who is weak. You shall not defer to one who is powerful. You shall judge your kin with justice. You shall not spread slander amongst your people. And you shall not stand idly by the blood of your neighbor. Why? I am God. This is a whole semester. This is power. Look at the verse 15, 16. This is power. You're supposed to be judged equitably. You know, the scales of justice are blind. You shall not defer to people in power. You could write books about, just take today's headlines, especially today's headlines. Or yesterday's headlines or any headlines in the last, God knows how many years. And juxtaposed to this moral and ethical stance of what Judaism says. It has to do with power. It has to do with money. It has to do with control. It has to do with all kinds of things that pervert justice. And then for the visit, for those of you who are medically inclined, here you have one of the great proof texts in Jewish tradition. We, we have not had a chance to talk about, and hopefully we will, oh my God, about the impact of Judaism and medicine and the linkage between Judaism and medicine. But here is one of the classic proof texts which allowed people to grow up to be doctors. And that is, you shall not stand idly by the blood of your neighbor. In other words, if you see somebody in pain, you must help them. If you see somebody sick, you must help them. There's another passage from Deuteronomy that eventually I'll try and, and teach you. This is the major, one of the two or three major bioethics proof texts in all of Judaism. It lays the foundation for the entire development of Judaism and, and medicine. And here's another one that's absolutely, did you know, that you may not have known, that, that came from Leviticus 19. The ahavta vireaka komocha, you shall love your neighbor as yourself, the golden rule, whatever. This is where it comes from. It comes from this particular passage in the Book of Leviticus. That again, encapsulates the thing is, you love your neighbor as yourself. Psychologically, for those of the mental health field in, in, on this call, what does it mean to love yourself? What does it mean to love yourself? And there is enough, and again, all you have to do is look at the news. There's enough people who act out against other people, who criticize other people, who attack the other. That psychologically, based on this passage, you'd hold up a mirror and say, they really don't, they don't really don't like themselves. They don't even respect themselves and they project that out to other people. There's a fascinating, fascinating passage. Verse 32, one that we use all the time in my Jewish sacred aging work. Rise up before the one whose head is white with age. Regard an elder with respect. This is the zechaim, the elders. This is part of who we are in our culture. And there's another sermon in this, which we don't have time to do now. And you're probably, that's enough already today. So there, this is the classic, one of the two or three classic passages on respect for elders that come from the Torah. And verse 35, this is the delicatessen passage. You shall not act unjustly in judgment. In the measurement of weight and liquid measure, and you shall have honest scales, honest weights and honest ephah and an honest team. In other words, in other words, I know this doesn't happen in Jacksonville, but the, the deli that I go to. When you go and you get a pound of corned beef. A pound of corned beef and the guy slices it and he says, oh, it's a little over. You know, that's contrary to this passage. If you order a pound of corned beef, you're entitled to a pound, a pound of corned beef, not a pound and an eighth of corned beef or less. I don't make, it, we always have fun with this passage. But really, again, it goes to the moral, ethical aspect of Judaism as a moral and ethical religious civilization. Again, in summary, all found, all underlined by this continuous line of ani adonai. You do this because you are in a sacred relationship with a power beyond oneself. Again, I just wanted to point this out to you. You can read this. It's, it's a great passage. I don't know whether there are any questions. I don't know whether there are any questions. If you do, or anything else, I got about two minutes before I have to run and warm up to see if I have a fastball for the next couple of hours or whether we're just gonna rely on our off-speed stuff to get to the shofar. And by the way, for Neela, I mentioned this, I mentioned this too in the Bima on TV. If you have a shofar at home, it's gonna be really cool. Maybe you can blast out the city of Jacksonville, that would be really, that would be really cosmic. But we have, you know, the service ends with tikiyagadolah. If you have a shofar at home, take it out, warm it up. And we get to that passage when we hear the call for tikiyagadolah, let it loose, just let it loose. And, you know, if your neighbor complains, just say, "Listen, be careful what you ask for or you're concerned about, because if I do that again, the walls of your house may come down."
Okay, Rabbi Felice has a question, she has her hand up.
Okay, Felice, you have the honor.
Thank you so much, this has been so spectacular, this whole holiday. Thank you so much to everybody.
We're not done yet, Felice, we've still got, I have like three hours before I had the sacred Dunkin' Donuts.
I can't stop laughing and being joyful with all this. I, having grown up, having grown up in the delicatessen business, I had a question about the weight. My thought, my thought about that always was, and I could talk to you another time if you want, because I know you have to run, is that if he says it's a pound, but it's really an ounce or two less than a pound, that that's what's not honorable. But if he says it's a little over, is that okay? Then if somebody, you say yes, then it's not, it's not a problem, that was my thought.
If you agree that you want an extra or some guy, some guys, they just say it's a little over. And I know people say, "Well, just let me sample it, I'm gonna make sure it tastes good." So they'll take, I'm not joking, by the way, not joking at all. It's a, it's a good way to get snacks at the deli, you know? It's a little like, let me taste it, maybe see if it's okay. Not like you're gonna give it away, put it back, you know, re-slice it, put it back in the case. You're, so you're from the deli business?
Yes, many years. I started working when I was 12 years old in my daddy's restaurant.
In New York?
Yes. Bless you, New York.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with New York deli because I'm from Philly and we always get jumped on. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for your very kindness. I'm gonna run and I will see you on TV, which is a bizarre way of saying, "I'll see you, Yisrael." Don't forget the Kleenex. Take care, shabbat, no, shabbat, veyyantuv.
And if this was awesome.
Everybody, there is approximately 18 minutes until the service starts, 15, 18. If you'd like to stay on, I'll be happy to keep the Zoom up.
Love to.
And you have the opportunity to unmute and talk.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Hey, I'll see you in a couple of minutes.
Jean, this experience, this whole experience is so spectacular, thank you.
It is equally. Thank you, Jean. It's been lovely, it's just wonderful, more than lovely.
Yes. Magnificent.
Looking forward to more.
Magnificent.
I'm trying to type a message and can't seem to do it. So I'll tell you, I'm looking, it's been wonderful and I'm looking forward to more.
Right. Marilyn, I didn't get a chance to see you before this. I'm happy to see you.
Me too. Hi, Anne.
Hi, Felice.
Ruth, where are you right now? Are you in New York or Jacksonville?
I, I am in Northampton, Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, oh, okay.
I am at my sister Caroline's house right now. Next weekend, I'll be in Oneonta, New York, at my other sister's house.
Oh, that's really nice.
We're gonna help take care of my recuperating sister for the caregiver sister, so she can get a break.
Really?
So, yeah.
Good.
Yep, and then I'll be home, I'll be home on the 12th of October.
One minute, I have a call. I have to get on.
So, yes, I am still up north.
How many sisters are there, Ruth?
I have three sisters and two brothers.
Very nice.
I'll live up north. Yep. So, it's, it's been, it's been scary, but I've had two COVID tests so far that were negative, so. I actually flew up here in a, in a, one of those medical PPE outfits with mask and shield and gloves on the airplane. And I'm gonna wear the same thing on the way down, I don't care.
Good for you.
I don't care what they say. And I'm gonna quarantine for two weeks and then maybe get another COVID test.
They're free at the Mandarin Senior Center, that's where I've been going.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they have very few people there, so it's nothing to worry about. You line up outside and they only let a couple of people in at a time and they took over the whole seniors, you know, it's all spread out.